Heavenly Father, we are grateful that you have given us this beautiful day to enjoy. We are grateful for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us and those that live in this city. We pray, Heavenly Father, for those who are in harm's way tonight, we ask that you would heal that land and heal those folks, Heavenly Father, and bring them back to their homes. We ask that you would bless this council as we deliberate the issues of our city. And we just pray, Lord, that all the decisions that we make here tonight will be in the best interest of those that we serve. And we make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a first item on our agenda tonight is going to be a special presentation to Mr. Joseph Carter. Joe, I see you here with your family, and they're welcome at the podium as well.
How you doing? Good seeing you. Is she coming out? I've got a good-looking boy up here.
The thing looks like his mama.
You're right about that.
We've missed you. Joe is back tonight so that we can honor him and say thank you once again for the tremendous service that you offered this city. I know that when I come down the back hall, I would always beat on his door just a little bit and give him just a little bit of a hard time, but he's perfectly capable of giving me a hard time as well. But Joe, we really do miss you. We miss the job that you did while planning is thriving. They miss you as well. And you're just such a credit to this city. You know, what great credit you brought upon this city and in doing so brought upon yourself and your service here. And we're very appreciative of that. And I'd like to read the resolution if I could. It's a resolution recognizing and honoring Joseph N. Carter, Jr., former principal planner, Community Development Department. Whereas Joseph N. Carter, Jr. began employment with the City of Pecosin in February 2007 in the Community Development Department as a principal planner. And whereas during his three-plus years of employment, Joseph N. Carter, Jr. willingly assumed additional responsibilities and performed his duties in an exemplary manner, always being responsive and cordial to his coworkers and the citizens of Pecosin. And whereas Joseph N. Carter, Jr. resigned his position as principal planner effective November 12, 2010, to accept employment elsewhere. And whereas it is deemed befitting and appropriate that Joseph N. Carter, Jr. be recognized and commended for his years of employment with the city and the many contributions he made to the organization, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pecosin does hereby express its sincere appreciation to Joseph N. Carter, Jr. for his outstanding performance and his dedication as an employee of the Community Development Department. Be it further resolved that best wishes for future success and happiness is extended to Joseph N. Carter, Jr. and a framed copy of this resolution presented to him as acknowledgement of the services he rendered to the City of Pecosin and its citizens. Joe, on behalf of City Council, indeed on behalf of everyone in our community and certainly the staff, it's my pleasure to present this resolution to you and offer you the microphone if you have something you want to say.
Thank you.
Sure.
But I'd just like to thank City Council and my former colleagues and citizens of Pecosin to have the opportunity to serve you guys. I really appreciate this. This is to be recognized for my work. I think it's a great honor. I've always tried to pride myself in the work that I perform, and it's nice to be recognized for it. I learned a lot here. I enjoyed my time here. The time with my coworkers was great. It was indeed a family atmosphere and something that shouldn't be taken for granted. So I really appreciate the time that I had here and working with everyone. And thank you for this recognition. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wheeler, would you like to introduce Mrs. Irvine?
Sure. Tonight, we're fortunate to have with us Kimberly Irvine, who is the Director of York-Pecosin Social Services. She is here to provide an update to you on the work of the homelessness group and the I never get the acronym right, but it's the Homelessness Prevention Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Good evening, council members, Mr. Wheeler, Ms. Wiggins, and Mr. Moore. I'm Kimberly Irvine. As Mr. Wheeler said, I'm Social Services Director, and I appreciate this opportunity to come before you tonight to talk to you about homeless prevention programs and specifically the HPRP grant. In December 2009, York-Pecosin received $200,000 in federal grant funds through the Homelessness Prevention and Rapid Re-Housing Program, or HPRP. The Social Services Board approved for our agency to manage this grant, and we received some administrative funds which we used to fund a part-time position. The HPRP grant targets two populations that are in need of temporary assistance, and that's individuals and families that are currently living in housing who are at risk of becoming homeless and need temporary rent or utility assistance or need assistance to move them to another housing unit, and individuals and families who are homeless and need assistance to obtain housing. Most people that we have helped who have needed assistance have needed assistance to remain in their homes, and they've had a temporary setback beyond their control, such as a loss of a job, or they were self-employed and had decreased income due to the economy, or they had an illness that caused them to become behind on their bills. In order to receive assistance from the HPRP, an individual family must apply for assistance through our intake office. They can receive assistance for several months if they are reassessed every three months and they're achieving self-sufficiency goals. And their household income has to be at or less than 50% of the area median income, which for this area, for a family of four, is $34,000. And I have a handout that I'd like to provide to you. Actually, I have two.
Is there still money in the program, Kimberly?
Yes, we have $14,000 left. And the handout that I've given you does not reflect that. It looks like we have more, but the reason for that is we have assisted five families that do not live in either York or Pecosin that are not indicated on there. There are four from Newport News and one from Gloucester County. And we also have some pending applications and some encumbered funds that are not listed on there.
Because I was told that other communities could borrow money or take money from like York County, whatever.
Right. That's part of the agreement for this regional grant. The grant includes the localities of Hampton, Williamsburg, James City County, Newport News, York, and Pecosin. So if other localities are out of funds, and they are, we're the only one that currently has money, then we have to take those applications. We can't refuse to take them. That's correct. To date, we have assisted 82 families from York County and 32 families from Pecosin. And I don't know if there's going to be additional grant funds available through this HPRP grant or not. We expect that the $14,000 will probably run out by the end of this month. And we've also had some other funds that we've used. We've had another federal grant called the Safe and Stable Families Grant Fund, and that's a federal grant with 15% local match, and we've helped about 110 families with rent and utilities through that program. And that grant is expected to continue through next year. We've also helped a few families with rent and utilities through General Leaf Program, which is a state and local program, and that's going to end in that, so we will no longer have those funds. But I feel like we were really fortunate to have this money at this time during these hard economic times, and we were able to help so many families to stay in their homes. And most of the funds that we've had available to assist with low-income families has really decreased. And it's my hope that the economy is going to improve, but we're not seeing any indication of it in our agency. And the second handout I gave you shows the increase in caseloads, particularly in food stamps and Medicaid. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have on any of these grant funds.
Kimberly, these 32 families in Pecosin, are they...I guess my question is, the help that you gave them, was it temporary or is it ongoing?
It's temporary. That's a part of the grant is that it is a temporary system. They have to be able to sustain housing. In other words, they have to be able to achieve self-sufficiency. And like I said, most of the people we've helped, it's been a very short period of time. There's been some families we've helped more than three months, but they have to be achieving self-sufficiency.
Do these 32, do they survive at the end?
Yes. Yes, they've been able to maintain their homes.
Okay, okay.
And is that really 32 families then, or is this maybe 20 families?
It's 32 families.
Okay. Individual families.
Would you run over these acronyms, please, ma'am? S-N-A-P and T-A-N-L?
S-N-A-P is SNAP, and that is another name for the food stamp program. I call it food stamps.
Oh, okay, so it's food stamps.
I've been around a long time. I call it food stamps.
Okay.
They just changed it to SNAP, and I think it's Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program.
Okay, well, just long as we know what it means. And the next one?
TANF is Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. I've been around a long time.
Now, this, the grant money you were talking about, was that a state or a federal grant?
Which program is that?
The one that you're down at $14,000.
Oh, that's federal funds. All federal funds.
So it's federal.
And you're being affected in the new budget, just like I suspect, like everybody else?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'd love to come and present some of our budget figures to you another time.
Sure. I think it would be important for council to see those figures and hear those figures.
Glad to do it.
That'd be great. Any other questions, Kimberly?
No, but they do a wonderful job.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, they service a lot of people. I mean, I've had the unfortunate experience of helping people out, and they are really, you know, out there, you know, on the call duty to assist people.
Absolutely.
So it's great.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
We don't get to hear that all the time.
Well, yeah. I hate dealing with you, but it's a, you know, it's a way of life, unfortunately. If you know what I mean. Yeah.
But you're right, Frank. You absolutely should hear it. And I don't know how many times I've called duty, because usually, I guess, we're kind of the line of defense, and that people will call us, or they'll drop by or whatever. And, you know, it's hard for them. It's extremely hard for them to ask for a VECO bill to be paid when they're already three months behind, or a water bill because the water's about to be turned off. And you folks have been there. I know every person I've been involved with, you folks have been there every time.
Thank you.
Every time. And you deserve a tremendous amount of credit, and I hope that Richmond will see fit to do a little bit better job on your budget.
Thank you so much. We're seeing a lot of new people that have never come in before.
I think, Gordon, the hardest thing is getting people to make an appointment with one of the representatives.
Oh, absolutely.
And going up there and saying, "I need help."
It's a prideful thing. And I understand it, but they're certainly willing to, you know, help them out.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, we appreciate what you do. Please pass that on to your staff.
Thank you, I will.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly. Mr. Wheeler?
The next item is Employee Recognization. We've been trying for a while to complete this list, and I see at least two of the folks that are on the list are here. Just to recap, the remaining folks on the list, O.J. Smith, one of my glasses on, so if you're here, raise your hand, but I didn't think I saw you. Kent Lawson, who is probably working. Tom Jones, who is here. Milton Wiggs, who is here. And Vernon Bryant, who is not here, I don't think. But if you join me up front, we'll shake your guys' hands.
Sure, sure. We just, that's what we do best, shake people's hands.
It's my privilege this evening to pass out two of the last five certificates we have honoring Years of Service Awards that were provided in a more formal setting in December. Our city government works because of our people, and we are blessed with both a high number of people that live here, that work here, and a very high number of people that come to work here and stay a mighty long time, sometimes throughout their career. Tonight, we'll celebrate two such people. Tom Jones, if you'll come first. Tom is our Director of General Services and the guy who handles just about everything we don't know how to handle that we don't otherwise give to Bob Speechley or Jim Beach. Tom's been with the city for 20 years. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
And one of the important members of Tom's team is Milton Wiggs. Milton is another jack-of-all-trades sort of guy, but his main job is making sure that our parks facilities are properly maintained and safe to use, but that's just many of the hundreds of jobs that he does for us. Thank you, Milton. And Milton has been with the city for 25 years.
And she will get the other three.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Keith Hicks, are you here?
Okay.
I didn't think I saw him.
Okay.
Okay. Our last special presentation this evening is also, Mr. Jones, if you would come forward. Council members may recall, in the early fall of last year, we worked together with you to develop a plan, and it was really Tom and his team developed, to begin a leaf collection program during the fall and also to begin a twice-a-month, what I like to call temporary or mobile convenience site for our citizens to use for bulky waste, landscape, and white goods that we have out here at the parking lot at the municipal building. I think that all of you share with me how happy we are with the success of this program. And I thought we'd just take a moment to hear from Tom and have him introduce the members of his team that are here that have worked as part of that. And I have the whole list, Tom, if you don't have it memorized, but...
I don't have the list. You know, pretty much, you know, what I was going to say is basically, you know, we were tasked to, you know, put these two programs, you know, forward by you guys, of course, and for the citizens. And, you know, it took a lot of time and effort to get things, you know, going and organized like they should have been. And I think the guys, you know, with the backing of y'all, you know, I think they did an excellent job. I think that the programs, both of them, have gone well. The leaf program, you know, it really picked up along the way. I think we started maybe a little bit early. We started in October the 18th, and we didn't get a lot, you know, that month. But it's kind of a trial and error thing, and it was only going to run through, I think, through December. And, you know, things went so well, we went ahead and, you know, did it month by month with what came up. So we actually, you know, extended that two additional months. So actually, the last pickup will be the 28th of this month. And I can't think of many complaints that we had. I think most people were, you know, were delighted to have it. And, you know, the thing that I see for the city, you know, we didn't add any more people. We didn't add any equipment. You know, we did it with the people that we have. And there was a couple of times, you know, we had a couple of big months. I think, you know, the largest two months, you know, we got 4,407 bags in two months, and that's quite a bit, you know, going, you know, every other Monday. That's quite a few bags we picked up. And there was a couple of times we had to put a couple additional people to help out a little bit, but, you know, Doug Montgomery's in the audience back here. I got to pat him on the back. He's really, he's been the mainstay of that, and he's been working effortlessly. You know, he comes in whenever he has to. He works as long as he needs to. And so the leaf program went well. And also, you know, Doug, basically, this convenience site program that we, you know, that we started up for people, he comes in. It's, I said, it's the first and third Saturdays of each month, and he pretty much runs that program too. So I want to pat Doug on the back. He's done a real good job. All the other guys too, and they're all not here, but probably every one of our guys. You know, we're kind of lean in the Public Works Department, and we all do whatever it takes, you know, from the parks to the solid waste to whatever, to get the job done. And I can't say enough about the employees that you guys have here that makes my job, you know, fairly easy because they're such a good bunch of guys. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Actually, I think you got the numbers there, all except for this past week. And, you know, I think we had like, let me see, like, over 20 drop-offs this week. So it's been pretty good. Our largest drop-off behind here at City Hall was 48 at one time. That was the largest, and we've had a couple, you know, two-day, it's been, it was up in the 60s. So we've done pretty well. So I think everything's going well, really better than anticipated, so.
Tom, excuse me, a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Did the first and third Saturday do this for the white goods?
You can actually bring whatever you have up here, from, you know, the metal items, the bulk items, and the landscaping also. So the totals that you have, I think it's broken down there, you know, each one, but you can bring whatever you want. And, you know, and we've done this at a minimal cost. You know, Theresa and I figured out about what it would cost, you know, to have the guys work on Saturdays. And, you know, what we've been able to do with, of course, with Doug's input is we've actually cut that down a little bit. So I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping we're going to save, you know, a little bit more than anticipated, you know. So we're only going to spend as much as we absolutely have to to get the job done efficiently.
Does that also stop on the 28th?
No, that continues. That's pretty much from now until, you know, someone, y'all guys won't stop it. So I think it's, or it's not working out to where we don't, where it doesn't pay for, you know, it's not, if we only have, you know, two or three people show up, then I'll, you know, we'll have to make a decision when that time comes. But right now, we're keeping a fairly amount of people coming, more than I thought. And, you know, we even worked on New Year's Day, and actually, I think it was 10 or 12 people that showed up on that day, which was really, I really didn't think anybody would, so.
Well, Tom, you've taken this thing and really done a good job with it, no extra costs. And I realize, as you mentioned, but I'll say it again just with emphasis, the same people that do all the other stuff that we require are out here doing this extra stuff.
That's exactly.
And I got a lot of compliments from various people in the city about how convenient that was and how much they appreciated it. So y'all really done good on that one.
And it's not just the cost that you saved. The difference in the community, in cleanliness of the community, and the fact that I didn't see a whole lot of leaf burning going on this fall, and that's always been a problem for those, for the homeowner and for those that live around them. And for y'all to offer that service like you've done, you've made a real impact on the city, you and your staff, as far as what we look like. And with, you know, that's all thanks to y'all. So we really appreciate it.
Does Doug and his team have to empty every bag they pick up?
You know, the bag, the bag system, you know, the way we're working it right now, and next year, you know, this is, they're working, you know, VIBSP was working towards getting a machine that will actually take that stuff and grind it up and shoot in a pile. Right now, they're not taking that stuff. We just, you know, we just get rid of that. That's not composted right now, but we're working towards that. Next year, all these leaves, you know, we're hoping are going to be composted, and that will go a long ways. You know, we want to go as green as we can, and that's what we're looking forward, you know, to that happening. So that's actually, we're working towards that as we speak right now.
With the bag themselves?
Those bags, what will happen is, they've got the machine there, and it's like hooked on this big tub grinder, and right now, they're still, you know, trying to figure out a way to de-bag them without manpower, because that takes a lot of time to pull those bags apart.
Yeah, a thousand bags, yeah.
So the last thing that I heard was they were going to run bags and all through this thing, and this machine actually grinds those things up, bags and all, and spits 90% of the bags out one side, and then the leaves actually go into a pile. So it's really, if they can refine that just a little bit more, and they're using, you know, so they're back, basically using that. And, you know, what happened, you know, they're kind of doing a trial and error right now. So that's why, you know, they're only taking so many of those bags that leaves there now. So that's, but like I say, hopefully next year, all our stuff will go there. So that's what the goal is.
Any other questions? Tom, when you, when you see your folks in the morning, you and Milton and Doug are typical of the entire staff in this city. You always do more with less, as does every staff member in this city. You always step up to the plate and take on the extra, the extra jobs, and put in the extra time and the extra effort. We just, we just had that in a resolution for Joseph, and he was no different at the time. So you be sure and tell those folks how much we appreciate what they do. You know, I'm probably asleep in the morning when you're out there knocking your brains out. And we don't say it enough, but it's not because we don't think it a lot. So you take that back to your troops and tell them how much we appreciate what they do.
And as well, you know, we appreciate y'all standing behind us when we have our problems. So it's good to have you guys.
Let me just assure you, when you turn around, this council will be behind you.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. If I could just share a brief story that relates to this program. Tom indicated that we were open New Year's Day, and the question came to me about two weeks before that, did we really want to open on New Year's Day? And I said, well, I was sort of hesitant to want to tell people they needed to come do it, very hesitant not to do it. So I said, let's see if we got some volunteers. Before we have to direct anybody to come, let's see if anybody wants to come. And we got more than enough volunteers to come, so that I never had to make that call. They knew it was important, and they signed up to come on New Year's Day and stand in the cold to help people. And that's just the kind of people we got. We're lucky to have them.
Okay. All right, let's move on to our audience for visitors. If there's anyone in the audience?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Would this have been appropriate time, you know, the last, at the last meeting, I suggested that maybe we should take this one step further and help these guys with a machine, and we wouldn't have to use the bags. I've gotten some quotes from equipment dealers, and I've given each one of you a copy of these. And I think that for a little investment, we can help Tom and his crew a lot. It really kills me to see them, like when they're down on Pecosin Avenue a week or so ago, five of them in the ditch cleaning wet leaves out of the bottom of the ditch. It's a two-step process. They've got to dig them out of the ditch, put them up on top of the bank, then go get the truck, throw them in the truck. And this machine would eliminate all that, and would, the leaf vac, we could set up a schedule for each subdivision and have the leaves just raked out in the street, and this will, this will pick them right up, put them in a truck, cut out a lot of the labor. And I was surprised at how affordable they are. The new units, if we chose to go that way, and they come with a box that fits in the dump truck, already made for the hose, so it just blows the leaves right in the dump truck. They, if they're dry leaves, they'll mulch them up to about 20%. Wet leaves, of course, there's not much mulching, so whatever, but you could take the vacuum end of it and go through the bottom of the ditch, and nobody has to dig them out, throw them up on a bank, then throw them in the truck. You just suck them right out of the ditch. The interesting thing is, one of the companies has used units that for $12,000, we can get a used vac system and two boxes, so that one truck can be pulling the vac machine. It gets full, he leaves, and we've got another one, so that it's a continuous operation. So, you know, I would ask that my fellow council members see fit to help these guys out and make this a really efficient operation.
I bet we...
Tom, have a cup.
Tom?
Tom, have a cup.
Uh, no. So what, but you could take the, the vacuum end of it and go through the bottom of the ditch. Nobody has to dig them out, throw them up on the bank, then throw them in the truck. You just suck them right out of the ditch. The interesting thing is, one of the companies has used units that for $12,000, we can get a used vac system and two boxes so that one truck can be pulling the, the vac machine. It gets full, he leaves, we've got another one, so that it's a continuous operation. So, you know, I would ask that my fellow council members see fit to help these guys out and make this a really efficient operation.
Tom, have a cup.
Tom, sorry.
Tom, have a cup.
Uh, no.
No, not since we talked this afternoon, we haven't been able to get up.
Well, let's give, yeah, well, let's give Tom the, the information. And what we'll do, what we will do is let Tom review the information to see if that's suitable to, to your needs, Tom, and if it, you know, how, and if it speeds up. I'm not doubting what Buddy's saying for one second. And then let's, you get with the manager and if you deem it necessary to put it on the agenda for action at our next meeting. How about that?
That's my expectation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty.
We, did I do an audience for visitors? I got carried away. I almost did it before Buddy interrupted me.
I did.
Was there anybody in the audience that would like to address council on any issue? Anything at all?
The staff was going not to raise their hands, right?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, let's move on to approval of our minutes. We only have one session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the regular session of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made in second, we adopt our regular session minutes from January the twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven. Any concerns, comments, questions? None? Ms. Wiggins, please.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing dealing with the capital improvement plan for FY two thousand and twelve and beyond, FY two thousand and sixteen. Randy, any comments before we?
Mr. Mayor, this was the subject of your work session at six o'clock. And at six o'clock, we discussed the concept of a constrained capital plan. We reviewed the fact that there were over seventy million dollars worth of requests for projects from city departments and the school division. And the fact that if we constrain the CIP to the maximum amount of debt we could borrow under your financial guidelines, that the total amount we could borrow for a, a five-year period was about eighteen million dollars. And in the context of that, we talked about the need to deal with the TMDL issue, Chesapeake Bay coming forward. We're still not exactly sure what that means, but it's not too early to at least be thinking about what we're gonna do once it comes. We talked about the middle school renovation and the fact that the school board over the coming year will be looking at what the most appropriate, best reuse of that building is. And we talked about the public works building, phase one, which is the, which is the, the covered shed essentially portion of the current compound. And then we talked about cash funding. And we talked primarily about the fact that we did not have any cash funding currently going into the CIP of an ongoing nature. And that if we were to gradually increase it over the period, the types of projects that we might be able to find included, most, in most instances, vehicle replacement, whether that be public works vehicles, public safety vehicles, or school buses. It was several years into the plan that we could, even under that assumption, look at anything beyond equipment replacement. And that's a quick summary of the work session. And beyond that, we have no presentation.
Okay, anybody on council have anything to say? Okay, let's open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the capital improvement plan for FY two thousand and twelve and beyond fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We'll move past that, move to new business. First item is a resolution making nominations for appointments to the Board of Equalization. Someone prepare some names.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move that we adopt a resolution with the following names inserted, E. Gene Effer, Cecil P. Miller, Jr., James D. Rocky, W. Dennis Ankeny, and that we keep the fifth position open until we have people left.
Okay.
Second.
All right, a motion made in second, we adopt the resolution with those names inserted and one being withheld to a later date. Any questions, any comments, any concerns? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item two. It's an ordinance regarding applications to the Board of Equalization and the disposition of such applications. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance essentially sets forth the principal key dates for the upcoming reassessment process to include the process whereby citizens can appeal or ask questions about their assessments to our assessor and then on to the Board of Equalization. The assessor, I would note to the public, is scheduled to hold his hearings with individuals that wanna discuss their assessment, May the ninth through the twentieth. And then the, the Board of Equalization hearings are set between July eleventh and July twenty-second. Just for those people that are thinking about reassessment, it's never too early to write those down on your calendar, because if you miss them, you, you miss at least one process.
Okay. Any comments from council?
Do we know when they're gonna be sending out the reassessments?
Buddy, could you come forward, please?
Right now, I'm working.
Buddy.
Thanks. People at home can't hear you from the back. Right now, the plans are for them to go in the mail April fifteenth.
Okay. Any other questions, Buddy, while this?
That's good text, eh?
It's right there. Good, good time of year.
Good time. Perfect timing.
All right, Buddy.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Okay, someone prepare with a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance of the City of Pecoson, Virginia regarding applications to the Board of Equalization and the disposition of such application.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second, we adopt the ordinance. Any other concerns or comments? Any questions?
Just a question. Will we post these dates on the city's webpage so that the citizen will have?
Should, should. Good point, right, yeah. Okay, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item three. It's a resolution making an appointment to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Randy, any comments?
No, sir.
Anyone have a name?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we appoint Kerry Harold to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals with his term expiring on January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. All right, a motion made in second, we adopt the resolution with Kerry Harold's name inserted. Any concerns, comments regarding that? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item four and the new business. And the last item, it's a resolution amending sections twenty-four point one, twenty-four point eight of the Personnel Policy Manual pertaining to annual leave accrual and payout policy. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, and thank you in advance to members of council for, for reading through this, this treatise. But what I've done since I arrived is, is look for opportunities for instances where there was variation between what had become our administrative policy, sometimes over a period of decades, and what our formal policy was. And this was an area that I identified early as needing some attention. The document before you lays out both what your current adopted policy is, what our, what our policy has been, our implementation of that over, over the past twenty years, since nineteen eighty-six, and lays out a number of options to address it. Essentially, the issue here is how much leave can an employee carry over, annual leave that they earn from year to year? And an associated issue of when they leave city service, how much of that leave would they be eligible to be compensated for? And right now, the city's policy for compensation, and that is really what's driving this decision, is you can be compensated for up to eighty hours of annual leave that you have, in addition to any leave that you earn during the course of a, of a not fully completed year that you had not taken. That's your maximum number and it's affected by your use over, over the, over the period. But we have that aspect and then we have the question of how much you're just allowed to carry over and reuse from year to year. The options that I provided for you really go from, from the one which I'm recommending, which is, is closest, in fact, matches our existing practice, but also is the one that, that is least change for employees. In fact, there's, there's no, there's no negative change to employees at all, but also the one that minimizes any financial impact of the change. And bringing this together, there certainly are arguments that can be made to increase the maximum amount of carryover of leave that you can take from one year to the next, up from the eighty-hour standard. In fact, I, looking around, couldn't find any other jurisdiction that we surveyed that had it at that level. It was all higher than that. But what I'm trying to say is that at a time where we have very little money to provide an, an increase in a policy that could substantially increase our costs, it's just something beyond our financial ability to do. So, so that's why I've recommended to you the policy that most clearly adheres to our existing practice and that has the least fiscal impact of the change. Be pleased to answer any questions that you may have. I may call on Judy as well. She is the one that helped me through much of the history of the development of the administrative policy for implementing this policy.
Thank you. Any, any questions to the manager?
I understand the part about how much we would buy back, but is there any disadvantage to the city at all for folks to carry over or to accrue any other leave? Is there any disadvantage to that?
Is there disadvantage for allowing people to carry over?
Yeah, to the city.
To a greater number.
Right.
Essentially, that's what the practice is now. We allow people to carry over an amount beyond the eighty from one year to the next, but we set a hard cap on how much of that we'll compensate them for. And we have always been true to that aspect of the policy. So this policy, which, which reflects that practice, doesn't change anything. Now, there is a, there is a vulnerability there. And the vulnerability is that someone may attempt to use a great deal of accumulative leave as they're retiring out of the organization. There are two schools of thought on that. Certainly, it's leave that they've earned, but it's also time, time where the position is essentially vacant in a small organization. And I believe that that was part of what the city council was looking at in nineteen eighty-six when it made the changes to our policy that we had at that time, which at that time allowed for a two-hundred-and-eight standard carryover and, and accrual, or payout, sorry, compensation at termination, separation.
So basically, what I understand, this resolution to do, or this ordinance change to do is adopt the personnel policy manual change, which basically puts formally into practice what we've been practicing since nineteen eighty-six.
That, okay.
I personally don't feel that eighty hours is fair to an employee. And if we've got the accrual rate correct, which I think we do for the four increments, I would rather see us say that you can carry over what you've accrued that year. In other words, if you're, you've been here twenty or more years and you accrue twenty hours a month, it's two-hundred-and-forty hours a year. Well, you've worked hard to get to that level. And I think to turn around and say, we're only gonna compensate you for eighty hours of it, it, that just doesn't sit well.
That's not what I would.
I would rather see us say you can carry over and compensate for what you accrue in a year, up to, I think the difference here, Buddy, is they're saying that you can carry across eighty hours of what you accrue in a single year.
That's correct.
That's it, period, yeah.
That's, that's, basically what they're saying is, you know, you, you can't carry the whole amount. You need to take some vacation, keep your sanity and all that stuff. But we also understand that there's a reason why you may not be able to use it all in a small city, but you can keep eighty hours and get paid for it the following year. But you can only always carry over eighty hours. That's the way I understand.
And I think that's, you make a good point about, people need vacation. And, and some people in our society, and I know how hard our employees work in Pecoson, were hesitant to, to take some time off. And I think it's good to actually encourage people to take a vacation.
I don't like option one. I like option three. Guess where you can, you can carry over more leave time or vacation time?
It's not so, it's, it's not carrying over more, it's being paid more when you leave, am I right? Am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, well, okay.
Both.
But look at what we've done for our employees over the last couple of years. Not a whole lot. I mean, here we're forcing them, like a twenty-year, like a twenty-year employee to use up all his, all his leave, all his vacation, that one year timeframe.
I think we're heading down the wrong lane with the understanding of, of what this is. Maybe you should go through this again.
There are two aspects of this policy. One is how much you can carry over.
Eighty hours.
And use. Our practice, that's, I know this is complicated because I spent four months thinking I understood it, only to ask the question again and find out I was going, that didn't work. Two aspects. One is what you can carry over. Our current policy, and I'm talking, not counting firefighters, they got their own number, but our current policy says you can carry over eighty hours. We have allowed people unrestricted carryover. That's how much you carry on the books from one year to the next. The second issue is how much you can be compensated for at time of separation. So you're leaving, you're retiring, you're getting another job, whatever reason. At that point, our current practice is you can be paid for up to the eighty hours that you may have carried over from the previous fiscal year, plus any annual leave you've earned in the year that you haven't used. So in Mr. Green's example of a, a very tenured employee, he or she, if they retired, let's say at the end of December, just to make it easy, would have earned two-hundred-and-forty hours of annual leave that year. Had they not taken any annual leave that year, they would be being paid for the eighty they carried over and two-hundred-and-forty. That's the December example. Part of what makes this hard is if they had retired in January instead and hadn't earned any yet, they would be eligible for an eighty-hour payout. So your payout is dependent upon what year, excuse me, what month you leave. An alternative is to just boost the number up for everybody, but that's a big financial impact that, that I didn't wanna go too lightly.
We should look at the budget time, maybe.
Well, and that's the thing is, you can, I would recommend that we put into place what we're already doing. And then that you reevaluate this every two years. That you should put something in every part of your personnel policy, or, and that, that's up for debate, how often you look at personnel policy. But you still look at it and say, does it fit the, the current model that we're operating with?
Then we're.
I can tell you, for a small city, we could end up with a gap in a key position because we're paying for the position.
And there's nobody there.
And there's nobody there, if we're not, if we're not conscious of what we do. It's not about what we're, what we're saying is unearned. Our employees, as we've talked about, earn a tremendous amount. But we could actually end up fulfilling a gap. And the federal government, the shipyard, they don't, they don't have the same gap because they have thousands of employees. We've got tens in the department. And so, let's say you take a public works guy and he gets there, you can't actually hold that position for some period of weeks, because you, you don't have it accounted for in the budget.
Make it some period of months if you extend it far enough.
Yeah. But I'm not saying that over time, we shouldn't look at improving that, because I think that it's a worthy thing to look at. And maybe you look at it every year as far as, does it fit? But I'd say we put into place what we currently have and then try and improve on it.
I like the idea of option one, maybe not stuck on the eighty hours. Maybe we could go up on that some, but that. Maybe we could go up on that some, but that idea I think works well. And suddenly, it's a general question. This is annual leave only, is that right? I mean, there's still sick leave in addition to this.
That's correct.
Okay.
If you're saying, Randy, that-
Vacation time, not sick leave included, correct? That's what you asked, I just want to make sure.
If you're saying, now, a person who has 80 hours and he has another 172 hours accrued, if he gets out the end of December, he picks up that 172 hours plus the 80. If he gets out in January, he just gets his 80. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. See, I don't buy that.
That's the nature of your current policy and the current practice.
I don't, no.
Well, that doesn't bear carryover.
Well, the difference is, he would have already gotten paid or used the 172 hours. Okay, so he's not, it's not like you killed him, okay? He would have been able to use the 172 or gotten paid for that.
Would have still been able to use the vacation.
Yeah. Well, he'd get paid for it, but he'd been able to use the 172, in which case he got paid for it in any case.
Right, right.
So he's not, you're not cutting money out of his salary. But I think we've got a lot of instances where the people, our departments are so small, they're not taking any vacation.
But they need to.
Or very little.
They need to, though.
Very little.
Well, they need to, but dedicated employees, they're not going to let the job suffer because-
Well, they take vacation and come in and work a few hours.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, don't we take that, didn't I read that we took that into consideration, or did I miss? Did I misread that?
Assuming that you have a policy somewhere that allows, on a case basis, for, I know most businesses have this, that allow, on a case basis, for the manager to waive that and carry over more in a key position, let's say that-
Or pay them for it.
You know, or pay them for it.
Actually, our policy, as written, does not provide for that. However, our practice-
We do it.
Was, we did it, and over time, it became so pervasive that they just abandoned that and just granted a blanket for everyone. One of the advantages, regardless of which option you choose, is that we'll have a formal policy that reflects what we're doing so that when an employee goes to manage their transition, if that's what they're going to do, they can go to a policy and they can look at a policy that actually matches up with our practice, and they can schedule their time of departure with full and complete knowledge of what our policy is. One of the things we found is that our current practice, which again is at variance with our policy, is not uniformly understood across all the departments or all people. Because people will, new supervisors and employees, over the 20 years, will go to the policy manual and they'll read it, and they'll think that's what the policy is. And so we wanted to clear that up too, so the people, in your example, Mr. Green, I think we better start by that.
I agree that we need a policy, an ironclad policy, because the way we're doing it now, you set yourself up for an accusation of discrimination. But I don't agree with the 80 hours.
No, but I'm not sure that-
I can only talk for-
I think it's worth discussing, but I think it would be best discussed as we approach the new budget. What I think, maybe tonight, we could just set the current policy in place officially and look at this. I mean, we've only had it for a few days to look at it, or I have. You've been looking at it for a few months, but maybe that's what we could do tonight is take action and establish that what we're doing is written out.
I think, establish the policy for what we're doing now, okay? And that's what we've got laying before us. We can look at impacts to the budget later on when we have time to do this, but it's also has the further advantage of having the fixed policy, having the employee, give the employee the capability to plan their leave, to make certain that they use some of their leave, so they don't get put in a situation where they lose it and they always are able to control it to their best advantage.
But if we disapprove leave, surely we have some mechanism where they don't lose that leave because it was disapproved at the supervisory level, I would hope. Is that right, Mr. Manager?
Well, we're back to practice.
Right.
Well, we would need that written, though.
Yeah, but what we practice is much different than what's here.
We talk about, you know-
And we're, I think, I think we, as a council, are on board with the practice.
We have a process that each year, employees are notified around July or August, between July and August, as soon as I can get the memo out, as to what the maximum carryover amount is and how much leave they have to use before December. So they have that number in place, and the majority of employees do that. They're very mind-worthy of not losing anything. Where the problem came is, is over the years, when we have had managers walk out and staff have had to pick up the slack and were unable to take their leave, and the city manager let them carry it over with the understanding they would use it within the first three months after the beginning of the new year. That practice worked for a while, but then we've gotten less and less staff, we've had storms and other things that have come into play, that your key people have not been able to take the leave because they are your senior leaders and they do accrue a lot of leave. The 20 hours a month is six weeks of leave a year. And to try to get six weeks in, do your work, a year is a lot of leave to try to get into play. And then when you have to fill these other responsibilities to keep the city running, you can't take your leave. Now, what would have, should have happened is that on January 1, I should have zeroed everybody out to 80 hours, but my conscience wouldn't let me do that, and no one has ever lost any leave. So they will get a memo that will say, "Your carryover is 80, but you've got 700 hours that you've got to use." Well, they can't use that. But I will tell you that every employee that has left here with an excess amount of leave, they lost it because we made them, we bound by the 80 hours, plus what they accrued that year, and the remainder of the leave, they lost. And you will have some employees, like you're saying, that will recognize that now, they'll start taking, the goal is, and Randy has told us all, you have to use this excessive leave or you're going to lose it. So we're all very much aware of that, and hopefully those of us that are going to retire in a year or two, we've already started taking our leave, and others have many years now to use that excessive balance to get it down so they don't lose any. But there have been employees that have walked away and left lots of hours, but it wasn't because they weren't informed every year. You must take this leave.
And if you start down this, Raul, and we found ourselves in this at one time, what you end up doing is compounding your issue because if you do it for one, then you don't backfill that position. Somebody else is not getting their leave time, as the example came. Now you've got two. Then you've got four. And so it just continues to accrue up, and you're impacting multiple employees in multiple departments, and you never catch up. So unless you have a policy that encourages you to take leave, but I do encourage you, Randy, to have an out for a hurricane event, for a unforeseen vacancy that allows you to make that leave available, but not, not that it should be handed out lightly, but you should have a policy that allows you to do that because you never know what's going to happen on December 1st, when somebody was planning on taking vacation on December 15th.
Understood.
And I even think we could look at the numbers if we want to change the 80, but I think, you know, right now, just go with what we have, pass option one, and then visit it again, as you said.
You know, I think we have a chance here. You know, we talked a lot about salaries and how we're down in salaries for public works in other departments compared to Newport News, Williamsburg. I think, I think we could make a, make a, an effort to help our employees by giving them more options as far as how much they can carry over, like option three says 100, and the hours don't have to be 172, 224, 272, and 320, they can be something else. But 80 hours doesn't seem like a whole lot to be able to carry over. I mean, two weeks is nothing. My opinion.
Well, two out of six is one-third of your vacation. Right? So you're not using a full third of your vacation in that, in that example. You get six weeks in the city, probably a whole lot better than some places as far as total weeks of leave. And then you're saying that you can carry over two of that or a full third, okay? So you gotta, and that's why I say, what I think we ought to do is adopt the policy that we currently have, and I think we need to lay out some examples before we revise this and do something here that I don't think we're prepared to really have the wholehearted conversation. I'm not saying I wouldn't revisit it and that I wouldn't look out for the employees. I would just say that we put into play what's currently on the books or what the practice has been, and then if we want to do this in another month, but let's lay out some particular departments and play a what-if game before we do something that is well-intentioned but shoots us in the foot on the backside.
You're saying like option one, but we may not be stuck on the numbers?
Correct.
Okay, I could go with that.
What if we made a moderate change to the maximum number now and agree that we will look at it in the future?
Well, that's your move.
I'd be, I'd be willing to, I will move that we adopt an ordinance incorporating certain amendments into the city of Pecosin's Personnel Policy Manual with the change on the maximum compensable carryover. We change the fire department to 128 and the city to 104. And that's 24 hours to each.
What kind of financial impact does that have?
I can't imagine that 24 hours is going to sink the city.
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but, but I think that's right. Essentially, a potential of two extra days of pay upon separation for a person that's separating and has a leave balance that would exceed 80.
Since that's the way you define moderate, I could go along with that.
Three days, excuse me.
You all with that, Randy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm not going to argue. You know, I think the, the case can be made that Buddy's exactly right and that this is a, is a good move for the employees. I just want to make sure that we don't intentionally, unintentionally, put ourselves in a gap situation where we don't have somebody because we're paying somebody who's saved leave to retire. And that's, that's all I'm looking for. And that's, and I know it's hurt us before. I've seen the gap. And we could certainly do that in a key department and a couple of them, one sitting right beside me.
My impression is that Randy's looked this over thoroughly, okay? And Randy has executed option one at the 80 hours, okay? I don't know exactly what the impact on the budget might be on this, but in the long term, however, if we're going to do things that may impact how much money we're able to give the employees, we might want to do it in better ways. You know, we did something this past year when we weren't able to, when we first started the budget. And so I think what we ought to, I think we should seriously look at what Randy has recommended and then sit down and have further discussion. We've had since Thursday to look at this, and to go in and second-guess behind him right now, I think is a difficult thing to do. Let's do that.
Okay. All right, you've moved.
Did somebody second the motion?
I'm getting ready to find out right now. Is there a second? And we're talking about a change in-
Tenure.
Fire department, 128, is that right, Buddy?
Mm-hmm.
And 104.
Okay.
So we've got, we've got a motion to do, to adopt this resolution, making those, that change, two changes. Is there a second?
Gradually, I'll second it. It's not enough.
Okay, then we have a motion made and seconded.
Well, this doesn't preclude us from doing something else.
Any more discussion?
I'd like to say I don't think it's prudent to vote on something that affects our finances without having thoroughly looked at it. I don't think we've looked at this thoroughly enough. I do think increasing the numbers may be a very good idea.
I agree.
And I want to look at it, but I don't want to, I will not vote yes yet without having had more time to look at it. So that's my-
Okay, good deal. All right, anybody else? Okay, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
I'm going to vote aye.
Councilman Creaker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
No, for now.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
No.
Councilman Southall?
I think it might be a good idea, but I think we need to look at it better, so I will say no.
And Mayor Helsa?
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of four to three.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to comments of City Manager Wheeler. Think we said enough for tonight?
Almost. I do really thank you for the attention you've given this issue. It really did take me months to pull it apart, and so thank you for that.
I don't think it's over.
I wouldn't go out there.
Nope. It's not in concrete, is it?
Just a, just a few things briefly. A note to the public that city offices will be closed February 21st, where there is a President's Day. Also, I distributed a mock-up of the Welcome to Pecosin High School sign and was made aware by several folks that wrestling does not have a silent L or an invisible L. We will fix that. I've also heard suggestions to change the font, to make it more readable, and to see if we can group the collection of sports and other achievements at the bottom in a way that is a little bit easier to read and perhaps doesn't look so cramped, and we will, we will take a shot at that. I appreciate everybody's comments on that. I think we take them all at heart and we'll have something that you'll, that you'll, that you'll really like. Also, just as a community footnote, on April the 9th, the Langley Motor Speedway will be honoring our recent, and I guess reigning, high school football champions. And anybody that's interested in participating, you know, come on out and support the team and the community that night there, and that's all I have.
All right. Mr. Green?
I could thank Randy again for helping us at state level. I had planned to attend the committee hearing, but some things came up that precluded me from doing that, and Randy answered all their questions, and it looks like that our request will probably sail through. So Randy, thank you again for all the work you've done on that.
My pleasure.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Carrie?
I just wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, just a, and Mr. City Manager, if you pass it on, I'd like to congratulate Joe Breeden and Travis Wright, who wrote a grant to get a new patrol boat for the fire department. And I think we talk about some of the vehicles in our city being old and in need of repairs and whatever, a lot of repairs. I think that the patrol boat that the fire department has had for a number of years, a lot of the firemen wouldn't go out in the boat because it was not as safe as it could be. So a big kudo to those guys for, you know, doing a grant, getting behind it. Now we're going to do a grant for fire trucks, we'll be okay.
You convinced the Port Authority that we can use fire trucks. That'll work good, though.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. I should have probably brought it up. That grant for this emergency response boat is almost a $300,000 grant with a zero local match and is sorely and badly needed.
Definitely. That's it.
But?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate our employees who recognized tonight. I think that they did an excellent job and certainly deserve those recognition. I'd also like to thank the city manager for his definite job in leadership. I think he's doing a tremendous job. And I'd wish everybody Happy Valentine's.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Tracey?
I'll second Frank's comment about the grant and the boat. That was very exciting to read in my notes this week. Also, I, I'm not sure we mentioned that in, people who are interested in Fort Monroe and what's going to happen to it, there's a town hall meeting at FIBUS Auction House, FIBUS Auction Gallery on the 17th of February from 6:30 to 8:30, where people who are interested in that can go and, and listen to what the current plans are. So I wanted to invite, that's open to the public. Also, with the Board of Equalization, since we did leave one of the positions open, if anybody's interested in serving their community, this may be a good time to submit your application for a board bank. And welcome to Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Make it real quick, Parks and Rec. I appreciate the work that y'all did in putting on the Champions Parade. I know we all attended. That was a great day for the city, and it's nice to see all those young people out there on the street as far as being recognized by the citizens, so that was great. We'll tell you that as the current state government budget, uh- We'll tell you that as the current state government budget, basically administrative session or legislative session wraps up, that everybody should pay attention to that and what that means for, is the shifting of the school costs and public work costs seems to be going further and further to the local level. That will certainly impact this council, it will certainly impact the citizens from the, from the tax look that we do, and you should look for at least an equivalent break from what you see from the state. I would tell you, you're not going to see that, but I just want to make the point, because we are entering into budget season, that the locality is picking up another full five, probably four to five percent of the school budget. And while that is part of our responsibility and will fulfill that responsibility, that is basically a shift in practice from the state. That won't make it easier for us to do the other things that we need to do in the city, but it is policy of the governor, it's policy of the legislative, and we will follow that and we will keep our schools home. Have no other choice.
All right, thank you, Judy. Anything else, anybody? Okay, we've got a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Please, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Creaker?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, we all adjourned. Thank you, Judy.
Good luck, man.